is dangerous and it's anti-American. In his speech, Dr. Martin Luther King, almost sixty years ago to the day, said this in his "I Have a Dream" speech, quote, "When the architects of our great republic wrote the magnificent words of the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence, they were signing a promissory note to which every American was to fall heir." This note was a promise that all men, yes, black men as well as white men would be guaranteed to the inevitable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It is obvious today that America has defaulted on its promissory note, insofar as her citizens of color are concerned. Instead of honoring this sacred obligation, America has given its colored people a bad check, a check that has come back marked insufficient funds. But we refuse to believe that the Bank of Justice is bankrupt. We refuse to believe that there are insufficient funds in the great vaults of opportunity of this nation. So we have come to cash this check, a check that will give us upon demand the riches of freedom and security of justice. We have also come to this hollowed spot now to remind America of the fierce urgency of now, unquote. Note that Dr. Reverend King spoke of this land as a great republic and our founding documents as magnificent words of promise. He called the Lincoln Memorial a hollowed spot. There were none of the current notions of America as existentially racist and fundamentally and irredeemably flawed. The very Declaration of Independence, so maligned by so many now, was not wrong in its words but in its deployment. The Declaration is glorious and a point of hope. Its words were a catalyst for America to be what she had always and will always aspire to be, a land of equal justice, freedom, and opportunity under the law. Today, I fear, we are dangerously far from the colorblind, character-based meritocracy King dreamed of. Increasingly, color is all that matters. If you're a person of color, you are oppressed. If you are white, you are privileged, and this means war. The class struggle, the Marxists, becomes the race struggle of America. We are better than this, and I'm convinced Reverend King knew that and built up on that. The use of racist terminology to battle racism is a strange tactic. True love of this land is both mandatory and salutary. If someone uses critical theory to denounce America as irredeemably racist and unjust, they are wrong. Our founding documents and principles are the very foundation on which we must debate and build. Rejecting them is to invite strife and ultimately the destruction of this great land, a land we are summoned to love and to bring greater perfection on account of the love we have for our country and for one another. This is just part of the link that I sent you. Let me close with this lyric. "Oh, beautiful, for heroes proved in liberating strife, who more than self their country loved and mercy more than life." America, America, may God thy goal refine till all success be nobleness and every gain divine." Please look at that link I sent you. The whole article is marvelous, and I loved your response. God bless America.
Amen.
Brett Carpenter?
You know, wrestling coach at high school artwork, he had a great idea how to mitigate the spread of COVID. He said before the wrestling match, he was going to eliminate the handshake. That sounds pretty idiotic, but I'm here to tell you that masks are just as idiotic. If you go to the CDC website, they say very plainly that less than six percent of the people who've died from COVID are healthy people. And they say right there in the same paragraph that the average person who's died from COVID had four comorbidities, which means the average person who died from COVID had, let's say, heart disease, cancer, high blood pressure, diabetes. If you look at the statistics, it's actually less likely for a person zero to nineteen years of age, it's less likely to die from COVID than it is from the flu in an average flu season. Let me just put this in perspective, just so you understand this. The H1N1 pandemic of 2009 killed ten times more children. But under COVID-19, two hundred times more schools closed down. It's incredibly inconsistent, it's irrational, the way that people are reacting to COVID, especially by wearing masks. It's absurd. Let me ask you this. Do any of you double mask your children when they go to bed at night? When you put them to bed, you double mask them? That would be more wise than masking students at school. Your kids are more likely to die from smoke inhalation in a house fire than they are to die from COVID. Your children are more likely to die driving to school every day than they are from COVID. Are you willing to make every car a bumper car with a maximum speed of twenty miles an hour? That's pretty stupid, right? You would actually save people by doing that. You're not going to save anybody by wearing masks. It's absurd. Did you realize that? Or let me ask you this, what do grapes, popcorn, and hot dogs have in common? I'll tell you what they have in common. They kill more kids, more healthy kids die every year from popcorn and grapes and hot dogs than from COVID. Are you going to outlaw grapes in the high school? Well, if you don't, and you insist on wearing masks, you are being completely irrational. It's totally absurd. It's unbelievable that you can actually do this. It's just crazy. Did you know that sports kills more kids every year than COVID? Healthy kids die more in schools playing sports than from COVID. Are you going to eliminate all sports from schools? Well, if you're not willing to do that, then get rid of the masks. It's totally irrational. It's like you've lost your minds. You're crazy people. It's just unbelievable. You know what? Wrestlers not shaking hands is pretty absurd, but wearing masks is statistically a tie with what that wrestling coach did. Parents should not obey these mask mandates. And you should not be listening to political organizations like the CDC to make your decisions.
Terry Hartman?
At the last school board, and I read from the castle.org website, which is the most sourced, source used for teaching social emotional learning. And I'm going to read some more quotes today like I did last week. And this is not from Fox News, this is not from a Dan Bongino podcast. This is from a resource that your teachers are using to teach social emotional learning, the castle.org website. Last week, I summed up what I read from Castle, that the reason people of color have educational inequities today are because white people, white elites, oppressed and exploited people of color. And today, I want to read some more quotes found on the castle.org website. Here's an article entitled "How to Be an Anti-Racist Educator." "We cannot afford to wallow in our discomfort regarding issues of race inequity. Some questions for teachers to ask themselves include: How does your power and privilege show up in work with your students? Do you and the academic materials you use uphold whiteness or lift up the voices and experiences of people of color? Acknowledgement, racism, and ideology of white supremacy." Here's some more quotes. "Acknowledging the social construct of race and racism and the ideology of white supremacy recognizes the problem." Another quote. "Knowing our country's whole history helps us make sense of how our current education system perpetuates inequity." Another quote. "For too long, we have taught US history devoid of a true depiction of black excellence and have focused on erasing the truth of racial oppression and uplifting whiteness." Another quote. "Colorblindness fails to acknowledge the impact of racism on all people and further does not push white people to do the important work of reckoning with the legacy of white supremacy in our lives." Another quote. "The false premise of colorblindness is often deployed to obscure the discomfort white people have with confronting ongoing and historical racial oppression and injustice." Another quote. "Helping children see the role they have to play in fostering equality and inclusion through racial justice is a critical piece of this project." These are quotes from the castle.org website, and they're used in teaching your children. The Every Student Succeeds Council, maybe you've some seen this, is on the Goshen Community Schools website, talking about the Every Student Succeeds Council, and the statement of purpose reads, in part, "The council works to eliminate the systems in our school culture that sustain bias and discrimination." What systems in our schools are biased and discriminated? I think I know. "Parents watch out for racially oriented surveys your kids will be taking. They are not part of a great Marxist experiment."
Brenda Miller?
I would like to read for you some of the forty-five communist goals that were in the Congressional Record in 1963. Number seventeen, get control of the schools. Use them as transmission belts for socialism and current communist propaganda. Soften the curriculum, get control of teachers' associations. Put the party line in textbooks. Number eighteen, gain control of all student newspapers. Number nineteen, use student rights to foment public protests against programs or organizations that are under communist attack. Number twenty, infiltrate the press. Get control of book review assignments, editorial writing, policymaking positions. Number twenty-one, gain control of key positions in radio, TV, and motion pictures. Twenty-four, eliminate all laws governing obscenity by calling them censorship and a violation of free speech and the free press. Number twenty-five, break down cultural standards of morality by promoting pornography, obscenity in books, magazines, motion pictures, radio, and TV. Number twenty-six, present homosexuality, degeneracy, and promiscuity as normal, natural, and healthy. Number twenty-seven, infiltrate the churches and replace revealed religion with social religion. Discredit the Bible and emphasize the need for intellectual maturity, which does not need a religious crutch. Number twenty-eight, eliminate prayer or any phase of religious expression in the schools on the grounds that it violates the principles of separation of church and state. Number twenty-nine, discredit the American Constitution by calling it inadequate, old-fashioned, out of step with modern needs, a hindrance to cooperation between nations on a worldwide basis. Number thirty, discredit the American founding fathers, present them as selfish aristocrats who had no concern for the common man. Thirty-one, belittle all forms of American culture and discourage the teaching of American history on the ground that it was only a minor part of the big picture. Give more emphasis to Russian history since the communists took over. Thirty-two, support any socialist movement to give centralized control over any part of the culture, education, social agencies, welfare programs, mental health clinics. Thirty-eight, transfer some of the powers of arrest from the police to social agencies. Treat all behavioral problems as psychiatric disorders, which no one but psychiatrists can understand or treat. Thirty-nine, dominate the psychiatric profession and use mental health laws as a means of gaining coercive control over those who oppose communist goals. Number forty, discredit the family as an institution. Encourage promiscuity and easy divorce. Forty-one, emphasize the need to raise children away from the negative influence of parents. Attribute prejudices, mental blocks, and retarding of children to suppressive influence of parents. Forty-two, create the impression that violence and insurrection are legitimate aspects of the American tradition, that students and special interest groups should rise up and make a united force to solve economic, political, and social problems. This is what's happening in our education system. I ask you and everyone in this room, are you on the side of American freedom and liberty or on the side of communists? Take your position. Be warned.
Philip Crawford?
Good evening, school board. Hope you guys are doing well. I'm doing well, and I am delighted, as all get out, to hear some of the comments from my friends tonight. I want to echo very strongly, America is not a racist country. And I can tell that just looking across this school board and looking across this audience. This country, as I've said before, was founded on the principles of God and the Bible, that every single man, woman, and child are created in the image of God with the same rights. Why? Because God gave them. And when we forget that, that's when we go off the wall and pick up such things as critical race theory, SEL, and we start elevating races above each other. Man, we gotta get this straight here. Just because we're white does not mean we're better than anybody else. Just because we're black doesn't mean we're better. Just because we're Hispanic. We've got to come to the realization that we have one Creator and one Judge that's above us. And if we will realize that, we will straighten this out. You know, I am proud that I'm an American, and I'm also proud that I'm a citizen and a community member of Goshen. Because unlike Marxist communist people in this town think, we are not a sundown town. We are in fact a very conservative Christian town, and I have documents and papers that if you want some, I can give you some right after this meeting that prove so. And you know what? I'm tired of hearing the terms racist thrown at me and my friends, especially from school board members. Guys, that is unacceptable. And if anybody in their right mind will listen, that is just completely unacceptable. Nobody should ever call us racist just for stating the truth. And they want to call me crazy, and they say we spew out hate speech. Absolutely not. You know, every student in Goshen Community School, whether they're homosexual, heterosexual, transgender, they're all created in God's image, and they all have the same rights. I've stated that before at State Council meetings. But at the same time, I believe that we do not need to pick on the Christians, such as people have been doing in recent days. We are a community with conservative Christian values, and we're founded upon that, and we won't back down from that. And also, one more thing before I close. I mentioned about God instituting the family before. That means God gave and instituted parents as the legal guardians to decide for children. Parents have the right to choose what's best for their children. And I would challenge you as a school board to keep that in mind. We should not mandate masks for all. It should be optional. If parents want to mask their kids, that is fine. They have the right to do so. But if parents do not want their kids masked and muzzled and suffocated for hours at a time during the day, they have that right. I challenge you, thank you, and have a good night.
Ashley Garcia-Foto? Ashley Garcia? Linda Hartman?
Hello, everybody. It's Monday, and I'm glad to see you. I'm going to tell you a story. I met a man on Saturday, and he had a little brown daughter in one of our elementary schools. And the little girl went to school this last couple of weeks, and the teacher said to her, "Who are you?" And she said, "Well, I'm an American." And the lady said, or the teacher said, "What do you mean, you're an American? Who are you?" She said, "Well, I'm an American." And the teacher says, "Well, where's your mom and your dad from, and your grandpa and grandma?" And she said, "Well, my mom and dad are from Detroit, and my grandpa and grandma, one of them was from Puerto Rico one time." She said, "Oh, you're Puerto Rican." And the little girl says, "No, I'm an American." And I think out of the mouths of babes comes this kind of stuff. It doesn't matter what color we are. We're all Americans. We're all the same team. I think that kind of thing is just indoctrinating students to think they're different. I look at the SR3 funding and the bribe that we took, and we just got nine hundred thousand dollars. And this came out in April, April 23rd of this year, so just right after spring break, before school got out. And number one for the requirements for in-person instructions was universal incorrect wearing of masks. So we knew full and well last April that we were going to mask kids in the fall. But all summer, we played the card, and we said, "Oh, no, no, we're going to Detroit. You're going to be good to do what you want." And bam, we're back to masks. Guys, that's not right. You know it's not right. So we just can't continue to strip the family of the rights to teach values and overstep our boundaries as adults. Educators are teaching things contrary and confusing to little kids to question what their parents teach, and they're telling our older students, "Sometimes you've got to break the rules because sometimes your parents' rules are holding you back." You need to leave our families alone and quit teaching, trying to manufacture crises. The parents are in charge, and you are not. And if you can't stop with all that foolishness, you just need to resign from the board because you're just not being effective. Just stand up and tell people what you're doing. Don't lie to them. It's not right. We lost over a hundred students to Fairfield this year. How many more are we going to lose? That's twenty teachers. Who's going to get pink slip? If I have to, I'll stand out front with a megaphone, and I'll tell the parents the truth because we're not going to get away with indoctrinated kids, not today, not ever. Your job is to teach your kids reading and math. Remember when I first started speaking to you guys? Our reading proficiency was thirty-six percent. Thirty-six percent of our high school graduates can't read. We are handicapping them. We don't have time for this other stuff. So pull out of SEL before you all lose your jobs. And I really admire a lot of you guys. I don't know most of you. But I come every month because Dr. Metcalf has cool socks. And if you want me to shut up, just tell Dr. Metcalf to start wearing black socks. No, that's not going to stop you because I'm an educator, and that's how it goes. Thanks.
I have the megaphone.
Rod Hoffman?
We're here because we want to keep our kids safe. I think we can all agree to that. Most of us haven't seen the studies on masks. I know we have some strong opinion about masks. No mask is a hundred percent. But you know, I'd rather have a mask that's seventy percent than a mask that is twenty percent. I'm a doctor, and I treat viruses and I treat bacteria. And I would like to speak a little bit about community health as opposed to individual rights. When a community is suffering from a pandemic, a pandemic kills. And in the United States, we have sucked at pandemic. We've lost over six hundred and forty thousand people. And that sucks, and we've done worse than almost every other country in the world. In my office, I have not forced anyone to get shots. I got mine early in December because I was fortunate. The FDA did approve the COVID vaccine today, thank God, because it does prevent. A lot of you are misinformed. A lot of you have not studied science past college, maybe even past high school. I don't know. But it is very, it is very, it's very clear. It's very clear. The science is very clear. I have not told my staff that they have to get COVID vaccines, but they all have because they care about people. And I think we should all be caring about people. And I would ask you, as a board, to care enough about our kids to protect them. The Delta variant is much more deadly. It is harder on older folks with comorbidities. Yes, it is. That's true. I happen to care about people with comorbidities.
I would ask that you please address us, and please have comments to silent as you're speaking. Please.
I care about people, and we all should care about people. We should. So how do we work at caring for our children? I don't want us to be like Alabama. I don't want us to be sending people out of state because our hospital is so full. I know nurses at both Goshen and Elkhart General, and I know things are getting full. And I know that they are getting worn out because people are not getting their vaccinations. And it breaks my heart when we have things to help us. We have tools to help us get past a pandemic, and we're not using them. So the science is very clear. Unfortunately, it's become political, unfortunately. Thank you. Thank you.
So please do address us. I do ask respect for everyone. We've been respectful through all this, with the past number of meetings. I would ask that we please continue with that. Jenna Crawford?
Hi, Jen Crawford. I'd like to just share a few of the dozens of comments we've gotten from parents, grandparents, community members, and students on the mask mandate. "It should be a freedom of choice. If you want your child to wear a mask, send one in. If not, let your immune systems work. Masks cause more harm than good on children, and many studies have shown that they do not work. Please stop this nonsense and abuse for the sake of our children, for their health, their mental health, their ability to learn. Enough of the weightless government control. Our grandson has heart problems and cannot wear a mask all day. He wants to be in school." "Let parents make medical decisions for their children. Masks have proven to not work. If they did, COVID wouldn't have spread to those who wore them. It's common sense. You put your mask on and off with your hands. Waitresses have masks on, but stir your drinks, bring them with their hands, and you touch them and drink from them. It's a virus. Nothing stops them. Eventually, it goes through everyone. Best defense is washing hands and faces, eating healthy, taking vitamin C and other important vitamins, and try not to touch people in public. Masks are ridiculous. Masks on your children should be called child abuse. You have no scientific evidence to continue this sham. Let's think about the children's mental health. Masks are not based on science, and they are perpetuating fear in our children. Please let them wear a mask only if they want to. This should not be mandatory. Against masks due to breathing dangers this has caused us directly. As an older adult who has a niece and nephew with the Goshen School District, I am one hundred percent against a mask mandate. There are numerous studies that have debunked the mask rule. You just have to be willing to do your own research. If a parent wants to make a decision that their child wear a mask, that is the right of the parent, but it's not a school district's responsibility or place to dictate what a parent should do medically for their child. Last time I checked, we were still the United States of America, governed by a document called the US Constitution, which grants certain inalienable rights, and enforcing mask mandate infringes on those rights." This is from a student. "I was really hoping we wouldn't have to go back to wearing a mask. I don't want to wear it. They are hard to breathe in, especially all day long. My daughter needs to wear glasses. It is hard for her to see with a mask because it fogs her glasses. She cannot see well without her glasses on, and not wearing glasses last year made her eyes worse. They need an immune system, and masks suppress immunity. Not to mention, if dentists can only wear them for thirty minutes, then why are kids forced to do this? Time for these elected officials to go. Children should not be masked. Masks are filthy, and they do not keep out bacteria or viruses. Fresh air is precious and needed. Nobody needs to breathe back in the dirty air they just expelled. So gross." Let our children breathe. So those were comments from parents, grandparents, students, and community members that we received.
I'm going to butcher this thing, so I apologize if we can't quite read it. Mitzi? Sorry about that.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Lately, the school boards have been overstepping their bounds. The school board has no right to make mandates for our children without our knowledge or consent. It is obscene and harmful for our children to be forced to wear masks. The science is clear. Private doctors and researchers have done studies that prove children wearing masks in class have done nothing to stop or even slow the spread of a virus and can cause both physical and psychological harm. You have no right to obstruct and restrict oxygen into our children's lungs. One may even say this is a form of child abuse. These masks interfere with our children's ability to develop a strong immune system while at the same time acting like a Petri dish and collecting... while at the same time acting like a petri dish and collecting germs and dirt. Only a few doctors and so-called scientists have been allowed a platform to speak freely regarding the unnecessary and negative impacts of children wearing these masks. What happened to open debates and transparency? This is critical in maintaining a well-informed community so that everyone can see all the impacts of a policy, both positive and negative, before making an informed decision regarding their children. The parents are the last line of defense in protecting the proper education of their children. And parents' decision regarding their children supersedes any autocratic policy. The number of children that are passed to the next grade unable to read or write at their grade level is absolutely unacceptable. We must demand a return to a focus on reading, writing and arithmetic. I demand a total transparency regarding the current curriculum being taught in public schools to all interested parents. This should be provided in writing, on paper, something tangible that cannot later be deleted by the stroke of a computer key. All the fear tactics that have been employed by the left-leaning socialists pitting children against each other by teaching any form of critical race theory needs to be stopped. This government-sponsored hijacking of our public schools, turning them into woke socialist indoctrination camps is absolutely intolerable. Any parents who care about their children's health and wellbeing should do whatever it is necessary to put a stop to it. Consider, one, lawsuits. Two, demonstrations in front of the board members and superintendent's offices and homes. Move your children to a private school or charter school. Homeschool your children or participate in homeschooling co-ops where multiple parents participate. Oh, my time's up.
Robert Waldowski.
Hello, Bob.
Hey, thank you very much. Um, I'd like to do a little education here tonight. Hopefully, uh, Bobby up there will pay as much attention to me as he has been to his computer during, uh, our comment. Um, thank you Linda for bringing up, uh, the information about the gear and the S R grants. Nine million bucks you guys received and what was the purpose of it? The purpose of it was to put our children in chains. And as Linda clearly showed you guys, this S R, um, what is required to, uh, in the return to in-person instruction and Bob knew about this early this year when he said, "Well, we'll think about making masks, uh, elective and then make masks mandatory." But he knew that this was part of the grant that you guys accepted the money for. See, accept the money and then you lie to the citizens. I think the masks look good on you guys, criminals wear masks. So part of this whole, this whole, uh, S R and gear grant program has requirements for it. And one of the requirements is to track your children's data. And maybe, maybe the citizens don't know that. But there's a whole guideline to doing that. And he's been teaching the teachers how to implement this tracking of our children's information. And some of the stuff that really got me wild about this is that, um, they're, they're collecting data for social-emotional learning purposes to identify who needs more support and collaborate on intervention plans to ensure all students have support from trusted adults. Now, this is the list of trusted adults. No mention of parents whatsoever in this. But counselors, teachers, interventionists, behavior coaches, principals, uh, district coordinators and, uh, administrators. And they wanna gather your kids' information and they wanna share it with the government. Share it with the local health board. And I was in a meeting today with, uh, the supervisors for the county that put through a grant request that they knew nothing about. But it's the same thing to have mandatory vaccinations and mandatory masks to accept the money for the grant. So this is coming down our pipeline and it's because people aren't being honest to you. Now, if you guys don't know that, then I'm gonna blame you for not paying attention and doing your job as elected officials. You know, you serve us. We are the employees. Please, please. Citizens are gonna know about this. I, uh, handed in, uh, a bunch of petitions today against this mask mandate that you put together. Hey, thank you for your time, I appreciate you being here tonight. Please consider the parents. God bless you.
Ann Brooksire.
Hi, my name's Ann Buckheiser. I want to thank you for the mask requirement that you started today for K through six schools. I have a daughter in fourth grade at Waterford and a son at Goshen High School. I'm a healthcare provider and never had, um, the, I, I've worked through the entire pandemic and the shutdown and it was really hard, that first term of e-learning for both the kids. And, uh, and then I applaud the school for trying to come up with, uh, good solutions, uh, for the coming year, but I just, you know, I didn't have any childcare and I felt a moral obligation to care for the community as a healthcare provider during the pandemic. Um, so for last year's school year, I chose to homeschool my daughter because I thought I could have more control over, uh, her environment and thought that, and then my high schooler went, uh, to school and, uh, that, and I was really impressed with how the schools were able to stay in session using the, um, policies that you did with COVID last year. And so I re-enrolled her this year for fourth grade and, um, was really surprised when school was starting that it was mask optional because I think that, uh, your policies last year is what allowed for in-person learning for the younger grades for all of that time and with minimal interruption for the older grades. So I would encourage you to still consider the Elkhart County, um, Health Department's recommendation as well as CDC's for universal masking for K through twelve as well as masking indoors for anyone regardless of vaccination status. I encourage everyone to get vaccinated because, uh, prevention is the best medicine. And in the same way that there are community rules and norms that we use to stop at stop signs, wear seat belts and do things to, to protect the greater good and the other people around you, I think that, uh, immunizations and masks in the schools can help with that. So thank you for what they're doing for our kids and our community.
Ms. Hoffman.
Well, first I just wanna thank you each for your service. I really appreciate you and the jobs you're doing. I think this is a difficult time for everyone in this room. I know we're all facing a lot of stress and, um, yeah. I'm here also as a healthcare provider, I did not come with any prepared remarks. I really just thank you for, the woman who spoke ahead of me, she said everything in my heart. I, I support masks for our children in schools, I believe it is safer for them. I believe we all want what's safe for our children, everyone, even though we have different opinions on what's the best way to do that. But for myself, I will, I just thank you that we do have a mask mandate now and I hope that continues. Um, our vaccination rate in Elkhart County is below forty-five percent. Um, which shows that there is still a lot of room for growth there and until our, our numbers get higher, the safety, this is not there for our children to happen to be in school without masks. So thank you very much.
Karen Andrews.
I'm gonna be very brief. I just have a question prefaced by the statement that I don't think there's anybody here tonight who is not here because they care about the kids. My question is, my search for truth is, can the board provide any peer-reviewed studies that show masks really works? I would like the board to provide an answer to that and cite a study that shows that.
That is everyone that was, signed up this evening. Uh, we are, we have taken all of our comments.
Sir, respectfully, we, we had a lot of heartfelt comments. Would you allow your board members to spend just a few moments expressing themselves? Would that be acceptable, sir?
The, the board will have an opportunity to speak at the end as they always do. If they choose to speak, that is up to each individual board member.
Thank you.
So this, this does end the public participation portion of our meeting. Uh, we appreciate everyone that chose to speak this evening. Um, it takes a lot to, to come up and we appreciate everyone's willingness to do so. Uh, as I said at the last meeting, uh, I do appreciate that we have done our best to be respectful of one another. Uh, there's a lot of differing opinions that exist out there, but in the end, we all do want what is best for our children and that's what we are all attempting to do here. Uh, I wish there was one magic thing that we could all do that would solve all of this. I don't think there's any one person that doesn't wish that. Uh, but we are continuing to, to listen. We are attempting to take all of the information that we can and, and, and understand what the public is saying. So we appreciate everyone's willingness to come this evening. We'll move on to the closing items and, and the first is, uh, eight point one, any items from the actual board members this evening that we'd like to speak on that were not discussed.
Well, Mr. President, I wanted to say, at the reception that we had earlier tonight for our new high school representative, I said to you folks that I made that comment about, I'm done listening, okay? And I said that in sixteen years on the city council and almost nineteen years as mayor, I've never said that, okay? Um, and tonight, uh, I met Mr. Hartman, I went in and apologized to him for having said that. Um, and in the, in the, until, uh, Lori Arnold partially said my name, okay? The first speaker just said, "A school board member." And so I know, I knew I needed to clarify who that was because I didn't want people to think one of you made that comment. It was me. And I told Mr. Hartman that I was angry when I said it and I shouldn't have said it, okay? Uh, I don't believe the exact quote was, "I don't care," okay? I think it might have been, "I don't care where it came from" or something like that. I do care what these people say. Uh, I am tired of being accused of teaching critical race theory. When Dr. Hope has told people that we don't teach critical race theory, we teach history, okay? And I heard him say to somebody, "If we're teaching critical race theory, tell me where we are because we're not supposed to be, we wanna know who's teaching critical race theory." As far as I know, nobody has said what, if I asked what teacher is teaching critical race theory? And I'm tired of being accused of things that aren't going on in this school system. And with regard to social-emotional learning, I know enough about that to know that it's not leading our kids to the conclusion that people in this audience are saying it's leading them to. So, uh, again, I, I apologize to the board for the fact that I made that comment because I shouldn't have.
What about us? Where's our apology?
Other comments from the board? Uh, eight point two, uh, any Ms. Landis administrative items, Dr. Hope?
Um, yeah, just quickly, I'll say, this mask decision was a tough decision for the, the, and this board. I am grateful to the community where the path runs so deep on both sides. We just wanna err on the side of saving our school year for our students. Having to do virtual education for students in kindergarten through grades two would be a very, very difficult endeavor. And we don't wanna do that. We just wanna save our school year. Let's just all pitch in together, do the best thing, hopefully this mask mandate will only be around for a few weeks and then we can go back to the school year that we're all holding for.
Uh, Adam, item, item eight point three adjournment, do I have a motion, please? Move the second, all the favor, please say aye. We are adjourned, thank you all very much.